Okay, being after seven o'clock, the Zoning Board of Appeals, May 11th hearing is now open. First order of business is reorganization of the board. So we need a nomination for a chairman first.
I would nominate Rick Peterson.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any other nominations for chairman?
You don't count.
I don't.
No, unfortunately.
All in favor of Rick Peterson as chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Second is nomination of vice chair. Do we have a...
I'll nominate Andy Burbine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? All in favor of Andy Burbine as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So now I get to turn the hearing over to...
And we have a clerk as well.
A clerk.
And that can be, that can be a non-voting or an alternate member as well, so that's...
So we need a... I was not aware of that.
Yeah, that was, Amy put that in a couple of years ago, yeah. So I'm gonna nominate Mr. Manning as the clerk.
I'll second that. Too nice.
Do we have any other nominations for clerk? All in favor of Mr. Manning as clerk?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So now we turn the...
Clerk's meeting. You want to switch or you want to stay there?
I'll, I'll stay here. I didn't realize this was gonna be a switcheroo tonight.
Yeah, I thought it was next meeting.
Surprise! The first order of business on our agenda is old business and new. Approval of minutes dated April 13th, 2023, and April 26th, 2023. And also acknowledgement of resolved litigation for 662 Adams Street and 166 Dexter Street.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 13th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the minutes for April 26th are not yet read.
Okay. We'll move that till next month. A question acknowledging resolved litigation. We got the, the email from Amy on those, but do you, could we add into the record?
No, no, no. I think just the fact that...
You just, it's really just that you, you were given them and, and basically you've accepted, you know, as read.
Is there any minutes that would now be made public as a result of the resolved litigation?
Once, yeah, I would say once the appeal, because they could appeal these...
Once the appeal is over, that's when I really consider it.
Once the appeal period is over, then the records can be, yeah, the minutes can be released.
My understanding is 662 Adams Street is not yet 100% resolved.
That was not resolved until...
Shocking.
It'll go on for a while. Let's see. And we'll move on to petition of Michael and Cecilia Lavangi.
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 I apologize.
Sorry. I apologize. I gotta find the right one here. Okay, I have to read the public notice. The town of Abington, Zoning Board of Appeals, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 11th, 2023, at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington. A petition of Michael and Cecilia Lavangi?
Lavangi.
Lavangi.
One more time.
Lavangi.
There you go.
For a special permit under 175-32I to allow construction of an accessory structure in-law apartment for the existing garages currently at 78 Captain Sanders Drive. The property is located on Assessor's Map 25, Lot 5, in the R30 zone. And I'd like to invite, where we're going to present this...
Who?
Just come up to make fun and just give your name and address for sure.
Michael Lavangi, 78 Captain Sanders Drive in Abington. Would you like me to, would you like him...
Tell us what you want to do.
Sure, sure. Well, as you can see, that's a depiction of the home with the in-law apartment. My wife and I have lived in the home 38 years. Brought up a family that we've been in Abington 44 years. We're both retired, don't need the big house anymore, so we looked at downsizing. However, one of our daughters has expressed a desire to move back to Abington with her family, and it coincides with our wanting to downsize. So we've looked at taking the existing garage, the existing footprint of the existing garage, and turning that into an in-law for my wife and I. And my daughter and her husband and our grandchildren will own the, the house.
Is there any questions from the board? Stuff that we... Well, I have one question, which is the letter from Marion Wong for denying the building permit. Is there something about that, what that means? Why is she calling it an accessory structure?
That's, Mr. Chairman. Town law, town bylaw language says in-laws and accessory structures are one and the same.
Okay.
There's not a specific wording for it. It's still 175-26A or C.
Call that.
Or 1, I'm sorry.
175-32. All right. So you, you understand all the requirements as far as you having to file, you have to file an affidavit every year that it's an in-law apartment?
Okay.
It can just be the two, you and your wife?
Yes.
Yeah. I think you meet the square footage requirements and all that. I think Marion looked that over, so... Building inspector, the building department sends out that affidavit, Bill, correct?
Correct.
So you'll get that every year, just saying that it's being used as an in-law.
The affidavit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it dies with you?
It dies with me?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, this doesn't carry over to the next owner. If there's a new owner who wants to use that as an in-law, they'd have to come in and get the, the special permit.
But if my daughter and her husband decide that they would like to use that for rental? Or family members? No?
Rental, no.
No rental, okay.
Yes.
Family, okay.
Family members, okay.
Yeah, but only family members set out in the bylaw, is...
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
But it can't be, it's not a rental unit.
Got it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just a point of notice that the Butters had no complaints with this petition?
Yeah, there were a couple of...
There was a couple of attachments.
Yeah, there was.
Maybe you want to redo them with this.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there's a couple of letters from the Butters. I'm writing this letter to Mike and Cecilia Lavangi's request for their home at 78 Captain Sanders Drive. I reside right across the street at 77 Captain Sanders. They've been one of my closest neighbors for nearly 40 years. I've been blessed to be able to call them friends. The addition enhances the neighborhood's appearance and stability. I very much support the addition. I'm very pleased and relieved that my friends will be here another 40 years with me. And that was from...
William Lavang?
Me.
The guy that wanted to take a seat, give him one.
What's your name, sir?
Phil Daxler.
Thanks.
And then there's another one from Steve Naskelko. I am writing regarding the pending request of Mike Lavangi of 78 Captain Sanders Drive. I live at 65 Captain Sanders Drive. We live directly across the street from the proposed addition. Mike is a great neighbor, and we have no objection to the proposed addition. We are sure that the addition will be done in a tasteful and respectful way. Thank you, Steve Naskelko. All those are written in record. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Lavangi?
I have none.
Would anyone else like to speak on this subject? Can I have a motion to close the public discussion?
Bring it back to public, from public discussion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public part of the hearing, yes.
Well, that's good for me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Time for discussion amongst the board members. Do you have any questions or concerns?
I don't have any concerns.
No, I think it's, the plan looks great, well done.
It's gonna be used in conformance of the zoning bylaws. It's an in-law apartment.
And thank you for mentioning the, the annual affidavit they...
They'd get one anyways, but just so you're not surprised.
Yeah. What is this? So is there any other discussion or questions?
No.
Okay. A motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion on the petition of Michael and Ceci, excuse me, Cecilia Lavangi for a special permit under Section 175-32I to allow construction of an accessory structure in-law apartment, where the existing garage is currently at 78 Captain Sanders Drive. Property is located on Assessor's Map 25, Lot 5, in the R30 zone. In the addition to be built in accordance with the plans submitted with the application.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So I think he has some paperwork for you to sign, right?
He does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with your...
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda, agenda, is the petition of Carolina Dreamy Properties LLC, 491 Washington Street. And I will leave that one into the record as well. The town of Abington Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 11th, at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington. On the petition of California, excuse me, not California, Carolina Dreamy Properties, LLC for a variance, under Section 175-21E12, to allow a tattoo parlor at 491 Washington Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 23, Lot 179, in the CBD zone. And could you give us your name and address? Tell us what you'd like to do.
So my name is Elise MacGyver, and my home address is 141 Pleasant Street, East Bridgewater. But I have multiple properties in Abington, and that's where I grew up. So I just come here today. As you guys know, I included it in the paperwork. The property used to be a tattoo parlor under a variance in the past, so I included it in that. Then it was made into a couple of other things. I think we've had like a brewery, hair salon. It's been all sorts of things. And recently, through no fault of our own, one of our tenants had to leave, leaving us with no tenant. But luckily, we knew of a place. It's actually, they have a successful tattoo parlor already in East Bridgewater. It's Sacred Edition Tattoo. It's been around for forever, and they're doing well. So they were looking for a second location. So they came to us and said that they had heard that ours was possibly gonna be up for lease, could they lease it? And we had said that we can check with the town. So we did start everything that's needed with the town. We've been down the building department a few times, and just trying to make sure we get all our ducks in a row to do it properly and request a variance.
Is there any questions from the board?
Is the tenant going to also lease the apartment?
No, so the apartment is already fully leased on the second floor
Okay.
by a Linda. She's sweet, so she's totally, so far, fine with everything. And then we also have the building behind that, which we apply. We have the CBD on that as well, so it's for business bays and then a tenant on the second floor, who he's awesome, he's fine with it as well. And then the building to the ne, ooh, I'm punching things.
That's okay.
The building to the other side is our other building, where I have Powerhouse Nutrition out of the first floor, which is my business, and then a tenant on the second floor, which is also fine with it. So we actually own all the surrounding buildings, and we've conformed with CBD on the first floor, to have business on the first floor and residential on the second floor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
So for a variance to be granted, you have to hit a certain number of requirements?
Yes.
For us to be able to...
So right now, our main issue is the financial requirement. This tenant that we had in there was locked in until, actually, for another year and a half, their lease is not up until late into 2024. And we had very short notice that they were not going to be able to stay. And rather than trying to deal with, well, I don't even know if it would be possible, but the financial, like hiring a lawyer, taking it to court, suing another small business owner for breaking lease, we were hoping to be able to go a different route and just get a tenant in there, which we had, that's willing to pay the full price, and that's willing to come in and kind of just take right over and start a lease. So really, it's the, it's a financial burden for us. That's where the need comes in, to have another one, rather than one trying to go through a long financial lawsuit with ourselves and another small business and a lawyer, obviously. And then the other one would be trying to find a suitable tenant. So far, this is the offer we've had, that's like a full, they're willing to pay the full lease price, and that way we can, kind of won't be stuck trying to pay for a tenant that's no longer in there.
So that, that's one of the four, but there's others. And the financial hardship actually has to have to do with soil conditions, shape, or topography of the lot. That's what a variance calls for. So, and that's why use variances is very difficult to get, generally.
Yeah, so how did it get it previously?
I don't, I wasn't here on the board at that point.
Oh, I did include the paperwork.
I saw, I saw. I did see them, but you do have to prove that the hardship is a result of soil conditions, topography, or the shape of the lot.
That's strange.
That's one of the requirements. And you also have to prove that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, so if you want to speak on that a little bit, and that the desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws. So those are the things you have to prove in order for us to be able to
Yeah.
consider granting a variance.
Okay, so one more time.
It's just one more, it's...
Yeah.
I know lots of people think they can just come in and they, variance is...
No, I...
I'm not saying you, but there are a lot of people who do it.
Yeah.
And that, we do have certain requirements that have to be...
Yeah. No, I have spoken with someone about this, and he didn't mention that the, someone that works here, they did not mention it had to be like soil or topographical. So that was new to me. That's why.
Yeah.
So that's strange. But, all right, what were the other ones? Sorry. They didn't tell me that. They just told me that one.
Yeah. The desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Okay. So do I have to explain why it won't be a detriment to the public good?
Yeah, if you can.
Okay. All right, very unprepared for that, but let me think. So, I mean, personally, I don't see a tattoo shop as a detriment to the public good.
And the other one is that the desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw.
Okay, from the intent or purpose. So the intent was for CBD, correct?
Correct. It's the CBD, and this is not an allowed use. The only, the only place that tattoo parlors can actually go, and they're only by special permit, there is no...
Yeah, I knew that.
There is no right to have a...
Yep.
In Abington, there's no right to have a tattoo parlor. It's just by special permit, and that's industrial and highway commercial.
Yep, I talked to Marion about that.
Yeah.
We were going over that. So, okay. Lot, a lot of new stuff coming. All right.
Let me, could I suggest something?
Yeah. I love that.
It's up to you, if you, now that you know what the requirements are, I don't know if you want to take and come back to the meeting next time, if you want to take some time and think about how to make your presentation on this, that would be fine.
Yeah, it's just a lot of...
Rather than try to overwhelm yourself tonight?
Yeah.
I guess I'm just caught off guard. Sorry, I don't want to cry.
That's, no, no.
That's why I'm saying if you want to take, if you want to take some time.
Well, no, now it's another month I have to pay for it. So like, it's just a lot. But honestly, I don't see why it would be a detriment to public good. I think I have tattoos, a lot of people here have tattoos. I wouldn't call it a detriment at all. I don't think you think so either. On top of that, sorry, it's embarrassing. I literally never cry, but I'm just like overwhelmed. On top of that, I mean, obviously, we're very invested in that area town. We bought three buildings there. My parents own building two buildings down. We're doing everything we can to like, put a crap ton of money into like reviving everything, renovating all the buildings, making it beautiful again. The last thing I don't want to do is shoot myself in the foot and make it either a detriment to public good, or ugly, or nonusable. Like, we are doing everything and pouring everything we have into Center Abington to make it beautiful again, because like, let's be real, it wasn't, and we're trying so hard. And that's why, I think that's why I'm so frustrated too, because I've dedicated like all my time and money since 2019, just like rebuilding, renovating, making it like a thriving downtown, trying to make it a place where people can go.
Who's, who's in the space now?
Nobody.
Well, who was in the space?
Amber Hair Salon.
Amber Hair Salon, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. They had, they had moved from...
They had moved four times, yeah.
All right, so, I mean, that would be, it's not gonna really change what it is. It's already been, not a tattoo studio, well, it was.
It was back in 2011.
And then it was...
As a detriment to the neighborhood, I mean, it definitely, it's keeping the business open, keeping the building going. More people are gonna be in the area. It's already been brewery, hair salon.
It's run the gamut.
Oh, the hair salon's allowed, so that's, that's allowed, so that's fine.
Is the brewery allowed?
It was not. That was a, that was a...
That was a second variance?
That was a variance as well. A used variance, yes.
There's a variance, a lot of variance is there. So that's why I don't think it's gonna be a detriment. I think if anything, we just pour everything we have into trying to make that downtown beautiful and nice, and renovate all the buildings with, on Emery Contracting, actually. And do everything we can to make it someplace where people actually want to go, and it's not nice or... So the detriment thing, I don't think it could be considered that in any way, shape, form, and obviously, none of the Butters did either.
Yeah.
Or they would have said, so...
Yeah.
All right, what's the next one? I'm just gonna cry really through it, embarrassingly enough.
The relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw.
So the intent of that zoning bylaw, the CBD, is to have businesses on the first floor and residential on the second floor. I think we are confirming to that. Whether it's a business that is considered a business or not, I don't know. I mean, obviously, you said it needs a special permit or a variance to matter where it's gonna be, but at the end of the day, I mean, it is conforming. It's a business on the first floor, bringing people in, bringing more business to Abington. It's a reputable business that has a longstanding clientele. Obviously, that's why they need a second location. They've been around for as long as I know. So do I think it's staying, I mean, personally, I do think it's conforming. I think you have, like I said, your business on the second floor, your residential, business on the first floor, residential on the second floor. None of that's changing. We're not changing it. It's just the actual use of the business.
Right, and that's, I think that's, that's the problem I have, is the use of the business that's not allowed there.
Yes.
And if we grant a variance, then we're, in my opinion,
Yeah.
kind of getting away from what the bylaw says.
When we crafted, or when not we, when the bylaws were crafted,
Yeah.
tattooing was illegal, correct?
Yeah, but they updated it when, because they do allow for it.
Well, I know they do under, but I mean, like...
It's not technically allowed for anywhere without a special permit or variance.
No, without a special permit, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Was there a re, I mean, I was on the board at that time. Was there a reason why they chose not to do, I mean, if it's other commercial uses? I mean...
Well, they're very, I mean, if you look at the use table, there's...
You know, I was looking at it, I mean, but it's like...
Certain things are allowed in that district, and certain things aren't, just like in every...
No, I know that, I just, I don't understand, you know, like, like that.
I, I...
No, like, you know, like, I kind of almost put it in the same ballpark as a, you know, beauty salon type.
But it's specifically in there.
No, I...
Like, a gas station's not allowed in a CBD district. If a gas station came in here in front of us.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, if you want to be extreme, a transfer station, right? And that's not allowed in a CB district, that somebody could come in here and say, well, you know, it's...
I guess I don't feel like a transfer station and a tattoo shop are anywhere in the same
No, I understand, but I'm just saying...
vicinity. For me, I do feel like it's very similar to a hair salon, a nail salon, which is two north down.
Which I don't, I don't disagree with that, but
Yeah.
my opinion, again, the way I think you change that is not, and it's not you, but the way that something like that gets changed is you change the zoning bylaw. You go in front of the planning board, they have a hearing on it, and if they think that that's a use that should now be, because maybe back then, tattoos weren't as popular when this was allowed, you know, written, but now they are.
When was it written, do you know?
I don't know when this change is made, but that's the usual route you, I think you take, is you go in front of the planning board, propose a change to the bylaw,
Yeah.
and then it becomes, you know, a use allowed by special permit or by right, but not...
So when I was going through all this, they told me the way to do it was, the only way to do it was variance.
Well, that is right, that's right. That's the only way right now for you to be able to take, try to get this through, but if it's not successful, I would think that that would be the place you would want to go, is if you're looking to get changes
I just think that's a lot.
to the CBD district.
I think that's a lot to ask. I mean, would I...
I'm not saying it's not, but I have a problem with a use not being allowed, and then me as a zoning board member saying, now, as one person, I'm, I'm basically changing the whole zoning bylaw by saying, now you can use that.
Would it be changing the bylaw?
For something that's not allowed.
Would it be changing the bylaw, or would it just be granting a variance that dies with that one?
For something that's not allowed.
Isn't any time you go for a variance, the thing is not allowed? And that's why the variance exists? So it's the same as granting a variance for an in-law?
Yeah.
Or anything else?
Well, in-laws, we don't grant variances, special permits, but yes, a variance...
Anything similar. So why would you grant variances for other things and not this? You wouldn't be changing the law.
Well, because if they prove each one of these factors...
So what have I not proven for you?
You're not proving that it has to do with shape, topography, or the soil conditions.
I mean, there is no soil, it's just a parking lot.
And that's the problem.
So, well, yes, it's like asking for things you know can't be done.
Which is why use variances are very rarely given, because they, you can't, it's very difficult to say that...
I understand what you're saying, it's very rarely given, but it's literally been given in the past two out of three rentals on this spectrum.
As I said to you, man, I wasn't on the board at that point in time. And if I wasn't...
I'm not saying you were, but I'm saying, obviously, it's not rarely given if this building alone has had it two out of three of the last tenants.
And that's part of the problem of giving things out when maybe you shouldn't, because then people look back to them and say...
Shouldn't, who did it hurt? What did it do?
I, I take an oath to uphold the zoning bylaw.
I know, I'm sure everyone here does.
Yeah, we all do. So in my opinion, this, these are the factors you have to prove
Yeah.
to get a use variance.
Okay, so let's go for parking lot shape. The parking lot is a weird shape, have you seen it? I have the plot plan, if you want to look at it. It is a crazy shape. There is, it does not account for a lot of parking. I couldn't do a type of like gro, like, let's say like a market, like, we just built actually on Temple Street. We couldn't do a market there. I can't do anything with high volume. It has to be one-on-one type appointments, because there is only a few spots, if you look, and they're very awkward. There's two along the road there, on the sidewalk. And then there's, I think, three in front of the building, because then we have handicap and the handicap ramp, because everything's up to code.[1604.21] So, I would say the parking lot does have a very specific need, so that it's not bleeding all into, all through Washington Street, and then around the corner.
So, Washington Street has public parking?
It, I mean, technically, does it, yeah, but we need it, the nail salon needs it, Powerhouse needs it, Emery Contracting needs it. There's only so much of it, and that's on the very corner. So, with that being the only business with a lot on that entire street, other than up to the bank, I would say it is pretty specific for parking. Because if you look at every single other business on that entire street, on that side of the road, the only ones with the parking lot are right there, four ninety-one, and then Santander, and that's private.
Mm-hmm.
That's really all there is.
So, you're saying that whatever use that space will have, requires some kind of a business where there isn't high.
No high volume, by appointment, it can be planned out, that type of thing. You're not getting a ton of people going there all at once, because it's not physically possible. There's already businesses sharing all that street parking, and there's not much of it when you look at the driveways coming in and out. We have about one spot in front of Powerhouse, I think there's one spot in front of the Three Family, one spot in front of the nail salon, and then Emery Contracting has one or two in front of them, and then that's it.
Can you go on a little bit on that?
If you look down Thaxter Avenue, that's all garage bays that you can't park in front of. And then it's, um, a nice gentleman's driveway right behind us, backing up to it. I also could be wrong, but I don't believe there's street parking past that, because there's nowhere, there's no shoulder or anything. It's just road and then someone's lawn.
On Thaxter Avenue.
Oh, Thaxter Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree with you.
So, the, the language of that is kind of awkward, you know, because it, it does seem like it has some limitation of use.
Well, I think, yes, I think you make a.
That's a very good point.
That'll point that the shut, the, the lot shape is an odd shape and parking is an issue because of the odd shape.
Parking is definitely an issue, that's one of the issues with the last tenant. Um, because there was too much high volume. So, we do need someone that is very, like, by appointment, by appointment only, smaller clientele, not something where you can have a ton of people.
Is that what's gonna happen there, or is it gonna be by appointment and by, uh?
They are right now, and, um, that's what they plan to do. Um, if you go now to Sacred Edition, it is very, they don't want, like, so I've been there, because we're actually renovating there for something separate on their, their existing location. Um, and they have, like, a person with a tattoo artist, a person with a tattoo artist, and that's, that's who's there. It's not, um, like, crowds of people, it's not, like, all this traffic off the street.
There's no walk-in business?
Tattoos have changed now, they don't.
Not usually.
They don't do like that old school, like, uh.
You usually get appointments, go like four to six months out or more.
Yeah.
So, if you want an appointment that you're looking at multiple months, usually, he probably knows.
I gotta test that, I'm waiting until September for my next appointment.
Yeah, they're very, it's very common in the tattoo industry.
We can condition a variance to say that it can only be by appointment, if that's something that.
I can work with that, yes. I can do that.
And that way you don't have, and then that way you can use, utilize the parking spaces out of there as opposed to.
Yes. That is fine, because right now, like, they're, they're booking out, so I know that they do all appointments. It's not, it's just when you have a good tattoo shop, you have a clientele and you have a long waitlist. So, I know they are by appointment only, and if they need to, they can put something on their window saying that.
Is that gonna cause a problem for you, if, if we condition it now and then you go back to them and say, the variance is only, is a, with a condition that would be by appointment, are they gonna walk away, or that?
I don't see it being an issue. Um, I can let her know immediately. Um, she's actually awesome. Um, and I've been corresponding with her on all the steps and the process and the paperwork. Um, so I have no problem saying that to her, and if for some reason it's a problem, then I would obviously come back to the board and we would have to re-figure. Um, but she's very good, and right now, they do, um, I'm trying to picture their door right now to see if they have a sign currently that says it, but I know they are by appointment right now.
I don't have any other questions at this point, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
I don't have any other questions myself.
Um, well, um, can I have a mo-, uh, actually, I don't need a motion. Does anyone else would like to speak on this topic?
I'm probably ready to go home.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing portion? Motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
So, that just means, we can't take any input from you, so, alright.
Um, now that she fought well on her feet, and, uh.
She did a.
I didn't take it very well.
She recovered, she recovered well.
Parking, that's actually a really good point, um.
Yeah, the shape of the lot, it's, it's an odd shaped lot.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely does, uh.
With a limited parking, yes.
Um, the last point you made, Andy, the last thing, the derogation of the bylaws. Um, is that something we still gotta think about?
Yeah, yeah, but that's.
But I don't know how you get a.
Personally, I guess that's, you know, specific to each one of us, how we think it's a derogation or not, so.
Yeah.
And it, things have changed since this was enacted, obviously, without the way, as you said, the way tattoo parlors are.
Well, I was just thinking where they had it specifically zoned, you almost think it was like, you know, like, back in the day when it would be like. It had to be, it had to be away from everyone, and now.
Addled district and all that sort of thing.
I mean, the last time I was there, there was a, the last, I go to Tiger Shark in Abington, and there was a much older woman than I'd ever seen in there getting a tattoo, so it's so much more mainstream.
It is, it is much different, it is much different, and maybe.
There's something to look at.
Maybe the planning board can look at that at some point in time.
Well, uh, is there any other discussion? Questions from the board?
No, not from me, I'm also.
I don't think I have any other questions.
Is there, am I willing to make a motion on this matter?
I will. Uh, on the motion, uh, or the petition of Carolina Dream Properties LLC for a variance at one seventy-five dash twenty-one E, uh, twelve, to allow a tattoo parlor at four ninety-one Washington Street, I move that we approve with the condition of by appointment only due to the shape of the lot.
Yeah, whether the parking.
The parking situation, and, uh, it'd be contingent on that being what the use is for.
Yeah, that's just the condition of the variance.
Um, second for that motion?
Uh, I'll second that, and again, I think, I think she made a, a good point about the, the lot shape and the, that was, that was.
Alright, uh.
So, I think it has, I think it meets all the conditions.
Yeah.
Bob, I think Bob has a question.
Um, yeah. We, we are entitled to put limitations.
Yes.
On this, and was the, was the motion and a second with that limitation, that it's by appointment only?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to verify that.
Okay, um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Sorry, I cried, guys.
No worries.
Something happened before.
Good luck, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Made you think it out.
Yeah.
There's always paperwork. Never lose, never lose paperwork.
Alright. This one, ah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we speak, I just wanna make mention that I did file with the Building Department a disclosure appearance as I have a relationship with the next client, and he is a neighbor and a friend. I just wanted it to be known that I did file a petition with the Board of Building
Okay.
to let them know that I had that relationship.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I got the right paper here. Read the, read the public notice for this one, somehow I.
Oh, the public notice, there you go.
Public notice for this last one, okay. Alright, thank you, guys. Um, read the public notice here, the Town of Abington's zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May eleventh, at the Abington Town Offices, five hundred Glinowitz Way. Abington on the petition of Rick and Rachel Collins for variance under section one seventy-five dash twenty-nine to allow a thirty-two foot front setback off Orange Street in a variance under one seventy-five dash twenty-six eight to allow a detached accessory structure to be located seven feet from the principal building at seventy-four Orange Street. Property is located on accessories map twenty-three lot two seventy-one in our thirty zone. And tell us your name and address, well, and what you're doing, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Rick Collins, seventy-four Orange Street. I'm here with my wife, Rachel. Uh, thanks to the board for hearing this. It's a bit different being on this side of the permitting process. Um, what we have before you tonight are two requests for variances for a planned modest addition that we hope to build soon for our house. The first is the variance needed for the front yard setback, and the second is, uh, for the required ten-foot setback between the main house and, uh, an accessory structure, which is a detached garage. So, just to provide you some background, uh, we purchased the home summer of two thousand nine. We knew at the time we'd always have to do some sort of significant renovation or addition to it. Um, frankly, it's, it's well overdue. It's been a great home for us, but it's just getting a little bit too small with, uh, four people, two, you know, soon-to-be teenagers coming into the house, so it's just, uh, it's getting a little bit too small. The assessor's card will say that it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, uh, twelve-hundred square foot living space, but that really doesn't tell the full story. I, I give you this as background as to why we're doing what we're doing. Um, you know, like, the upstairs bathroom doesn't actually have a shower, it has a tub, because of the overhang of the roof. We just can't fit in a shower. Uh, there's only one true closet in the house. It's a four-by-four cutout space in, in the kids' room. Uh, after fourteen years, we still haven't found the third bedroom. It's supposedly a three-bedroom, we don't know where the third one is. I think at some point, someone used the downstairs front parlor room for a bedroom. Um, but there's no closets, there's nothing there to indicate that it was ever a bedroom. Only thing we've ever heard about is that Mr. Christiansen, the one of the previous owners, used to sell, uh, model railroad supplies out of hi-, out of the room at times. Uh, but this is, you know, forty, fifty years ago. Um, the deed says the house is built in nineteen hundred. Uh, we've seen town maps where there's a house on the site dating back to the eighteen seventies, which is a way of saying that, you know, the house predates the town zoning bylaws. And anyone who's gone up Orange Street knows, there is, probably isn't a house on the street that meets the, our thirty-dimensional requirements. Every house is within thirty feet of the road. Uh, you know, Orange Street runs up to Abington Center, so the whole neighborhood is kind of built in that village style where the houses are kind of in the front corners of the lots. The back of them is, was kept for, uh, small farms or agricultural purposes, barns, other little businesses. And that's certainly the case with our house. As you can see, it's right in the front corner of the house. Half the house doesn't fit within the established setback of the original house. Yeah, not even doing anything. Um, the original structure is a Gothic Revival-style farmhouse, and then at some point, there was a wing added onto it that was, I believe, a kitchen, and then a farmer's porch. The farmer's porch eventually, at some point, decades ago, was, um, closed in, and now, basically, it's a dining hall. I can't call it a dining room, because it's not wide enough. It's basically just a hallway that we can have a table there. So, there's all sorts of little funky things with the house, just because of how it's set up. Uh, we do like it, believe it or not, but, you know, it's just a little bit odd in places. So, we're proposing to tear down that wing, uh, that right-side wing, and replace it with a thirty-by-twenty, two-story addition. That'll blend in architecturally with, there it is, with, uh, the rest of it. We'll have the, we'll preserve the Greek revival farmhouse architecture. It fits in with the style of the neighborhood. Um, the roof line's gonna be even with the existing roof line. We're not going higher. Um, and on the first floor, we, you know, kitchen and living room space. The existing living space is gonna be a mudroom for all of our Abington Athletics stuff that is just piling up everywhere in the house at this point. Um, upstairs will be a bedroom. We'll actually have a real closet that has real storage, um, and, and a master bathroom as well. So, oh, and then our kids, who are twelve and eight, twelve and almost eight, uh, will finally be able to have their own bedrooms. That's kind of the biggest thing. So, we'll have a total of three bedrooms in the house for four people. Uh, so, looking at the front setback, the front of the addition will actually be in line with the current wing of the house. We're not moving it forward. However, the farmer's porch that we're proposing does cross over that front setback line. It's a six-foot deep porch. It crosses, crosses over the setback line by about two feet. And that's where we're running into one of the problems. Uh, so that's where the variance comes from. We argue that the porch actually makes it a better-looking project. Without it, if you're staring, you know, standing on Orange Street, that's a fairly large structure. It's a thirty-foot-long, two-story structure. Having that porch then starts to break up the roof line. It makes it better, I think, while you're standing on the street corner. Um, it's just, I think, makes it a better project. The accessory, uh, structure setback in the rear, uh, could you go back to the plot plan?
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, uh.
Back one.
I have it on mine.
Uh-oh.
Well, it's not showing up there.
Did it freeze? Well, anyway, the, uh, the detached garage currently is ten and a half feet from, um, the rear of, side of the house. It's a three-season porch. And, uh, currently, what's there is a gravel pathway, a little bit of a rock garden, uh, that we grow some vegetables in once in a while. Um, what we're proposing to do is that back wall would be three feet closer. We're pushing that wall out, about three feet. Um, so that the distance between the structure and the garage would be about seven and a half feet. It would still be, you know, gravel there. Basically, we're just losing the little small pocket garden that we have there. Um, you know, we asked ourselves, do we really need to go back this three extra feet? We know it's gonna cause kind of the, this dimensional issue, and basically, the answer is yes, that without it, uh, it makes the rest of the project not work as well. Um, the other option, if you go any of the other ways, you start to create other problems. If you go closer to the street by three feet, you're, you're worsening that. Um, if you go out to the side, now you have to start cutting down trees. If you go, you know, somewhere else towards the back, um, you're digging up the driveway, you'd probably have to lose the big maple tree that's back there. So, we figured the least intrusive way of doing it is the way that's proposed here. And what this drawing shows you is the areas that are, we're looking for relief for. So, those yellow highlighted spots are the only parts that would be in violation of the dimensional setbacks. And as you see, when you take into consideration the entire lot, it's, it's not really that much. Um, we're leaving all the vegetation, we're not really touching the rest of the lawn, we're not touching the trees that are there. There's still thirty feet plus of landscaping and grass between the front porch and the streetway. Um, you know, so, we, we understand that, yes, we're, we're kind of causing a problem because of our design requirements, but the overall impact, we think, meet the, the needs of a variance. Um, you know, bottom line, we wanna have a modest, reasonable request that lets us stay in our house for a bunch of years, for, for decades. Um, we went to our neighbors, ran them by, uh, our neighbors, one of our neighbor is here. She is the one that we most impacted. She lives straight across the street, and she has to look at this thing every day. Um, her mother previously owned the house, a couple of owners back. Uh, she's in support of it. Our two neighbors in the back, who are at least eighty-five feet away from the structure, they're, I think you have letters of support from them.
Yeah.
Uh, our neighbors across Belmont Street are in support of it. Uh, we didn't hear any concerns. So, uh, the neighbors feel it'll be, wouldn't be an issue. Um, bottom line is that when we're finished with the house, we feel it'll blend in with the surrounding homes, and certainly won't be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So, uh, we respectfully request that you approve both variances. I'm more than welcome, so, uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the board on this?
Um, the, one of the first questions I had was, in your proposal, uh, you listed all the different evaluating pieces of the project, and under one of them is fencing, and you say there's no fencing being proposed at this time, but yet on the plot plan, there's a proposed fence right in front of the porch.
Yep, that was there by, uh.
The architect, we didn't want it there.
Yeah, so.
Architect put it in, because it's architecturally beautiful, but it's not.
We, we have no intention of putting a fence.
Okay, I just, I just need a clarification on that.
Nice point. So, this is a variance, not a section six finding, correct?
My understanding is that I have some variance request.
We have to meet those things for.
Yeah.
So, so it means the dimensional requirements, because the original property is put front corner of the lot from, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago, it's been required there? And again, I mean, it's really hard to, you know, it, it makes it tricky in terms of how to expand the house in any way as, without having much of an impact. Again, if we go much closer to the, can't go closer to the street. If we go to the west more, now we're taking down trees. If we go to the south, now we're digging up the driveway, and we're still close to the garage. We can't go towards the east, because then we're closer to Belmont Street. We're kind of pinned in there a little bit.
Got two fronts rather than. That's, that's the issue. We've had this before, where you have two.
Two fronts.
Two fronts.
Yeah.
You're in a corner lot, so it does make it.
And then the existing garage is already sitting there, so you're either.
The garage's been there for a hundred years.
Yeah, you either rip it down to.
Just seems like a.
And it's, and it's existing, non-conforming stru-, single, uh, single-family house, so. I think you would even be entitled to a section six finding, because you're making a non-conforming structure more non-conforming, so.
I think if they went up, it would be a finding, but because this.
They're coming up.
The porch, they're increasing the non-conformity, so I think that is what triggers the variance.
Yeah.
Did you consider a four-foot porch instead of a six-foot porch?
Uh, you know, that's a great question. It's something, I guess, if, if that's the defining, deciding factor, then, then that's what it is. I think it's, it's more just, how does it work in terms of moving around and.
That's the question I asked. That's the reason why I'm asking it, Rick. I wanna make sure that you looked at all the variables, and there was a reason why you went to six as opposed to four, because if you went to four right away, there would be no issue on that.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna think about just, you know, accessibility issues, if we have someone over that's in a wheelchair, and now you're talking even within four feet, really, to, for access, we do have older family members. Um, I mean, look, it's not gonna, we're not gonna not do it, because we can't go up to full six feet, but, you know, if it's, if it's two feet, we're asking, I, I don't, I think it's a reasonable request.
Okay.
Yeah, if you open like a screen door outwards, too, it would then, might block your progress to get by.
Well, the existing building on the left is, is twenty-four point five feet from, so this is still much less than.
Yeah, so the porch is still six feet setback.
Exactly, it's still setback further than what the biggest non-conformity is anyways, so, yeah. So, you heard the, the factors that we have to contemplate here, so. Soil conditions, obviously, I don't think that's an issue, right, but the shape and topography, I, I'm looking at your house, it sits up.
Sits up on a hill, so we have the, you know, the back is down, you know, it's probably a three-feet, three-foot drop-off. So, going back, that has to then impact how we're gonna move to the foundation.
Right.
And again, we have to dig up the driveway, we have to dig up a tree.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, again, we're trying to do it.
I think the topography has something to do with it as well, yeah, yeah. Uh, the other one is, uh, substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. You talked about how you want your family to be able to stay there and.
Yeah, we.
You need space.
If we wanted to, I mean, if we wanted to go get a similar-sized house somewhere else in Abington, it would cost significantly more. We want, we love our yard, we love our neighborhood, we love our neighbors. Um, I think this is the gentlest way of being able to, to stay here.
To move the garage would be very expensive.
Yeah, and, and if it came. And, and if it came down to connecting it to the garage, well, that's a whole other cost we'd have to add too for not much of a gain of anything.
Yeah. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Yeah, I think it improves the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that what's there now is looking very old and ratty, and I say it as the homeowner.
And the relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning by law.
It's still gonna look like a house in a village district. It's gonna look like it, it fits in, we're not trying to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack.
Yeah.
There's still plenty of space left.
We know people who have done that.
Yeah. So we're, again, we're trying to play, do this as gentle touch as we possibly can, making sure it looks good, we don't want it to look like two completely different homes stitched together, so...
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I don't.
I don't, at this time?
Could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do you want to check and see if...
Gonna throw it out first.
Does even, and...
I'm sorry?
Does anyone else want to come up and speak?
On behalf of...
Do you wanna speak?
I thought I had it.
Wow.
Just your name?
My mother would be thrilled.
Your name and ad, you can name an address?
Francine Mills, 75 Orange Street, I'm directly across the street from this house. And I'm well in favor of this.
Thank you.
And then there were a couple of letters too, I think.
Yeah.
Misplaced mine.
I set them aside so it had...
I did too. Everybody did. That's weird. How did that happen? Uh, here's...
We have a couple of letters, I'll read into the...
Who's in one of the other...
I'll read into the record.
Oh, yeah.
Um, this is a letter from William Patricia Shea at 24 Bank Street in Abington. We are writing in support of the application of Rick and Rachel Collins for variances related to their proposed addition at 74 Orange Street. We have reviewed the plans and have no objections, the Collins have been our neighbors for nearly 14 years. They've worked diligently to improve and maintain the property during that time. We believe granting the variances will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and will actually result in a better project. And it's from William and Patricia Shea, 24 Bank Street. Uh, and then another one from, um, Michael Hartigan, 16, 62 Belmont Street. We have the opportunity to, we have had the opportunity to review the addition proposed for 74 Orange Street, in which to voice our support for the request of variance. We are direct about the property and believe granting the variances will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Collins family were among the first to welcome us to the neighborhood three years ago and we are fully supportive of their upcoming project. Sincerely, Michael and Amanda Hartigan, 62 Belmont Street here in Abington. And, um, finally from Paul and Stacy Chase at 62 Orange Street. Uh, we are not able to attend Thursday's meeting in person, but wanted to write in support of Rick and Rachel Collins' request for two variances for their upcoming addition at 74 Orange Street. We are also part of a lot on Orange Street and Belmont Street and understand the dimensional challenges they face. We do not believe granting the variances will be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Again, from Paul and Stacy Chase at 62 Orange Street here in Abington. I think that's all of them. So the next thing would be...
Take it back from the public?
Yeah, but...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So discussion amongst the board.
I think it...
Seems to fit everything to me.
All the requirements of the...
Both, both, front and back, I think.
Yeah. Plus I like that style of rock construction. My brother owned a house like that in upstate New York today.
We love it, isn't it?
We love it too, but one reason we bought the house.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion amongst the board? Could I have a motion regarding this petition?
I'll make a motion on the petition of Rick and Rachel Collins for variance under section 175-29 to allow a 32-foot front setback on Orange Street and a variance under section 175-26A to allow a detached accessory structure to be located seven feet from the principal building at 74 Orange Street. Property is located on Accessory Map 23 Lot 271 in the R30 Zone. And for the addition to be built in substantial compliance with a certified plot plan and the architectural plan submitted with the application.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
No? That passes?
Good luck, very much.
Watch. So, is there any other, is anything else on the agenda for the evening?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.